Did it end up resetting?
Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, December 2nd study session of the Ferndale City Council. And we are opening the meeting at 5:38. Thank you for your patience. I'll get settled here in some work. I'm going to start first with a moment of mindfulness to start the meeting. I did this at our best city council week, and I think it really helps. So, the purpose of starting with mindfulness is a moment of silence to get our attention focused and ready for the meeting. Long night. This is a great mini break for our busy day. It is not mandatory, so if you don't feel like doing this, okay? If you want to join us at home, that's okay too. And you can sit quietly during this story. Okay? If you're being quiet at home, please follow along. You can keep your eyes open or closed. I'm just going to do this. So, bring attention to how you are sitting. Find a way to be relaxed. Let's give ourselves permission to let go of our present and into the meeting. Not typical that are city councils, but we have to discuss as a council and as a city important and complex, but it's thoughtful and compassionate. Plus, some work. So with that, we'll call from...
Councilmember James?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Lee Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Mikulski?
Here.
Councilmember Pollock?
Here.
And Mayor Piana?
Next is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as Paul.
Support.
Moved by James and supported by Mayor Pretend Lee Smith. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Lee Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Mikulski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana?
We have one consent agenda item tonight that was tabled at our first weekend November meeting, because we did not receive all the paperwork for this grant. Oh, thank you. Apparently, my mic was not on. And so, this is just coming back for us, because all the legal paperwork is now included in this, and this is about the Brownfield Grant for the full circus, first full circus, not circus, full circle communities, to execute an evil grant and loan. So, we need a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Sorry, I was chewing.
That's okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda item.
Support.
Moved by James and supported by Pollock. Any comment or questions from council? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Pretend Lee Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Mikulski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana?
Yes.
Next up on our regular agenda is the consideration of the 2021 Facilities Condition Assessment performed by the Bureau Veritas Technical Assessments LLC. And I wanted to kick this off first to talk about what is a study session? It's not something that this council does on a regular occasion, but it is something that other cities do when they need to take a deep dive into a complex issue with a lot of information to understand what the complex issues are, the information data, ask questions from staff. And typically, we have public comment for our items at the end, and that's what's going to happen tonight. So, we're going to have presentations from staff. There will be questions and discussion with council members, with staff, and then at the end, we'll open it up for public comment. And, but really, there's no decisions being made tonight. This is all about learning, digesting, and asking questions. So, with that, and it's going to be a long meeting, folks, so I appreciate everybody who's joining and watching at a later date to understand what's happening. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to our city manager to kick us off on the conditions assessment.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me one moment, please, to put the presentation up on the screen. Okay, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, oftentimes, if you're a new, if you're a new watcher or engager, we will have a special study session with council if the topic means more than the traditional 30-minute presentation cap that you would have on a normal agenda, and if there's intensive amount of information and feedback where the discussion can be focused just on that one sole topic. Other examples are strategic planning and budget sessions. And so, here we have a facilities condition assessment that was approved by council in April. And before I begin that tonight, I will be just kind of providing a really brief preface on why we're here tonight, then James Jamison, the city's facility manager, is going to go ahead and walk you through the report. And if council would prefer, I think it might make sense to not hold questions till the end, but have council engage in questions as James walks through the report. So, we have multiple sections, and I think probably whenever we get to a transition slide, we can just pause for questions, if that works for everyone else. And then I'll go ahead and come back up here and draw the conclusion, because I am definitely a talking head and not an expert facilities person, so James is our subject matter experti. He will be able to best answer any questions related to the report. We do have representatives, from my understanding, from Bureau Veritas also available for council to ask questions about the process and/or any other methods. With that, we will begin. So, this is really just generally putting it out there. The current state of facilities, city buildings, as the study will show this, majority of our buildings are 60 to 100 years old. Our building equipment, thanks to the results of the study, is 30 to 60 years old for the most part. Setting the scene, facility maintenance management had historically been decentralized. The department directors in the past, and, you know, broadly, I can speak from my understanding of past practice, is that directors of various buildings, whether that be a community center or public works, at the time, the libraries, we used to own the library or City Hall, department directors were essentially tasked for managing their facilities budget. So, that would be understanding your facilities' needs and incorporating facilities' repair requests on top. So, it was always really decentralized. And in 2008, following that recession and leading up to that recession, my understanding that budgets really reflected a deferred maintenance. That's just a snapshot preface for how it got here. So, what has been done, this is really just a reflection of the last couple of years. In 2019, there was a task force in process that was going to try to make some kind of visionary determinations on the, on the community center. I was appointed early in 2019, and I immediately understood some ownership issues that had me concerned. I also had some concerns about our capital fund balance and some of the needs that I thought might be necessary for other city facilities. So, before we made one significant decision on one facility, I suspended that and then really started moving forward towards onboarding other facilities' expertise. In 2019 and ongoing, really, we continue in good faith conversations with the school district, trying to navigate the question of ownership around the community center property. James was hired in 2019 and 2020 and started right at the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, so that's really the only environment James has known in terms of working for the city. Done an excellent job regardless, really leading. And, you know, James established our first centralized facility budget, and distributed that budget line across multiple departments. So, we are tracking facilities in a different way since James began working here. And we had a lot, we had a robust capital improvement plan that did include facilities, repairs, and replacements. And James really has just kind of executed those as they were already in place, as money permitted. And in 2021, this year, our goal, well, going back to April's council meeting and the budget session, was council wants to know the data, and so do we. So, we wanted to understand what the data was before you can make any decisions, and that's, in order to get the data, you have to hire an outside expert to conduct a facilities' condition assessment, to really get a health report on all your facilities. And that's what they did. Council wanted to add an energy audit to understand what the energy efficiency opportunities were for each facility. James's expertise was looking for the equipment index for each facility, and then, of course, study space needs for each facility, which really just speaks to interviewing the staff that are currently utilizing the facility and understanding what the modern needs might be, or what they are, what is or is not being met. And so, those interviews were conducted, and we have feedback to present tonight. So, the goals of today's special session, really, on the right, you see eight critical success factors. They're all icons that represent councils' eight outcomes that factor into our decision-making. The eighth one being added by council was climate resilience, so that's now a success factor of what must go right in order for the city to meet its vision statement. So, tonight, we'll review the assessment data. We'll discuss the five-year facility CIP and how that's related to the data and the reports. We will review the strategic objectives, which is why those icons are kind of, remind us, we're intentional about climate resilience, we're intentional about addressing inequities, and we're also intentional about addressing affordability within Ferndale. And then finally, what is the long-term facility plan? How can we address these, these issues as wicked problems? Because when you're operating in a scarcity environment of limited resources with such significant problems, they really are just wicked problems, and how as we, a community, can solve those? And before I shift to Jim, we're going to, I just wanted to summarize, kind of, here is a projection based on the existing budget adopted by council. Council does adopt a three-year budget, a five-year capital plan. This is really just a snapshot of the three-year budget that was adopted in April. So, we're really zeroing on the tax revenue side of things. On the tax revenue side of things, your green column is your tax revenue today with the Headley millage. And the tax revenue without a Headley millage, you'll see this in gray, that starts in fiscal '26, calendar '25. The facilities' needs that were identified in the study that James will present on is in orange, so that's kind of a new known, a new understanding, if you will. And then the blue, of course, is the program that were adopted in the April project through program-based budgeting. So, really, the purpose of this slide is kind of overlay the expenses versus revenues, and you can see it's off kilter, and it gets more off kilter as we've zeroed in on the question of Headley. If you take away that, if we're unable to have the 25% of the revenue, if we lose 25% of our tax revenues with a millage non-renewal, the facility need remains, and the programming decisions just have to be made at that point. And now, I will cede it over to James to talk about the technical, and I will get out of his way.
So, I'll start with the, just saying that the main goal of the Facility Condition Assessment Study is to present city council with the data needed to allow them to make cost-effective decisions to implement forward-thinking, sustainable, mission-critical updates within our facilities.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Yep. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The assessment, as was mentioned earlier, was performed by an outside contractor, Bureau Their proposal was picked as a result of a request for proposal process that was run through the Michigan Internal Trade Network. We looked at 10 facilities. And this is a map of the east side facilities. We've got City Hall and Police Station. Those were combined because they share a lot of utilities. DPW's main location on East Campbourn, the DPW pump station on Hilton Road, Fire Station Number Two, and some various park facilities, including Martin Road Park, which has restrooms, concession stands, and a storage area. West side facilities are Fire Station Headquarters, Historical Society Museum, that's next door to it, the Community Center, further down the road on Livernoy, the DPW Storage Yard, and some more park facilities. The dot was not in this study as it was just built, but it will be scheduled for a detailed condition assessment in five to seven years, which is the industry standard, as conditions change over time. So, the primary objective of this study, it is to document the building and site conditions and to provide a detailed inventory of equipment. It will prioritize repairs, it'll categorize them, it'll point out rehab, replacement, renewal, overtime, it schedules those by priority over the next 20 years. I use this graphic here to show the relationship between condition and maintenance and cost and time. If you look at the very bottom, we are, all of our facilities are aging, so time is advanced. As time advances for a building, conditions worsen naturally, and maintenance costs naturally increase. This is almost always the case, even if there is no deferred maintenance for a building. So, what we want to do with this data is enact systems that can manage the needs and budget with quality data. So, in addition to the FCA study, we did three studies, kind of alongside of it. An energy study that looked at annual energy cost and consumption. It also put together some cost paybacks and maintenance projects that will save energy throughout the course of the year. It also benchmarked each of our facilities and looked at a normalized rate of energy consumption based on square footage, so that we can rank them accordingly. The equipment index, as Joe said, is important to me. It's boring, it's simple, but it is essential to understand what you have in all your buildings. The space study records the current space configuration of the building. It looks at different industry standards for spacing, so if you have a director's office, there's three or four different standards. Those were all averaged out, and then we would know what the actual number is that a director's office, or an IT closet, or a mechanical storage area should contain. We've checked our facilities against those numbers. All three of these provide crucial data in making a long-term facility plan. So, next, I'd like to define some of the report terms. The reports were shared through council, and you guys have hopefully had a chance to kind of scan them. There are some essential, essential terms that give you a pretty good amount of data if you look at them. There's a facilities condition index. This can be one of the most confusing elements in the report, but it's also a very important element, so we do spend some time kind of defining that and talking about it to make sure everyone understands. It's a great benchmark for grading building conditions, especially across the portfolio, so that you can compare them. The immediate needs and key findings. It lists the immediate repairs, which is kind of obvious. There is a slide that goes over the next one, which is plan type classification. That just kind of gives us a reasoning of why repairs need to be made within our facilities. The system expenditure forecast goes over cost estimating and scheduling, as I said, over a 20-year period. There's a slide on that, so you'll get some specificity there, but it kind of categorizes things and then looks at five years, 10 years, 20 years. The energy audit, which I've already kind of described, it looks at consumption data for each building, and that data includes gas, electricity, and water. There's an EUI score, which compares the buildings to a universal median, and we'll get into it, but that median is normalized for the weather in Michigan, so that way it's easier, or it's a better comparison between buildings against the median. The final, final important data deliverable section in the building reports is the accessibility checklist, and this is a checklist that looks at compliance with the American Disabilities Act throughout our buildings. So, the facility condition index, I don't know what it is. It's right in the middle of all my slides. Facility Condition Index, or FCI, is the total cost of existing deficiencies. So, once you, once you see the system expenditure forecast, this will make more sense. It kind of lays everything out there, and that's the cost of existing deficiencies. And that is divided by the current replacement value, and what you get is a percentage. And again, this is a good way to benchmark facilities and compare them within a portfolio. So, what the percentage actually represents is the, the amount of, the amount of deficient maintenance items against the value. So, if there is a 30%, that means that the cost of the deficient items is about one-third, roughly, of the cost of the replacement value of the building. And you can see that there's a great analysis that's pretty standard for among the industry where it's good, fair, poor, and critical based on the ranges, based on the ranges in the FCI. Plan type classification is the next area I'd like to get a little specific on. This kind of just classifies all of the repairs that you see in the system's expenditure forecast. The first one is safety, and that just represents an unsafe condition. So, if there's a repair that presents a safety concern, it is classified as such. Performance is a failed system component, so that is a piece of building equipment that is not working, and it is considered failed. So, if you have a furnace that's just broken, can't provide heat, that's a performance issue. Accessibility is an issue that does not meet ADA standards. Environmental issues are improvements to air and water, so these are your sustainability issues. Retrofit adaptation, that is when space is not configured properly or area does not meet current code or standards. Life cycle renewal, which is one of the big ones, as you can see from this chart that I'll speak a little bit about, that's equipment that is scheduled for replacement. So, if you have a boiler that's supposed to last 30 years, if well-maintained, and that 30 years is up, it will fall under life cycle renewal. And this, this pie chart is actually the projected five-year expenditure forecast for our largest five facilities. And those facilities are the Community Center, City Hall and PD, DPW, and both of our fire stations. You can see that life cycle renewal is a majority of the repairs that are required over the next five years. And the total is, as you can see, 6.7 million for all of these facilities, and that's BV's number that shows on the expenditure forecast.
Through the chair, I just have a question on this slide, because I don't see environmental in the pie chart. I don't know if that was just inadvertently left off, or if it ended up getting subsumed in a different category.
No, and that's a good point, and it does get some, it is in a different category. The systems expenditure that we include in FB, FCI, they do not include environmental, sustainability, performance categories, because those aren't considered deficiencies. Those aren't, those are considered building upgrades, so it's typically not, typically not added to an FCI. It's not standard to do so, because technically, it's a want, not a need. It should be looked at, but it's just not in the FCI benchmarking. So, moving on, I've mentioned it a few times, the system expenditure forecast. This is the, the big one. This is the summary. There's a little bit, there's more detail in Appendix F in the building studies, but this one really gives you the idea of how money is spent. The immediate concerns are right there, and they're all subcategorized into systems. So, what you're seeing is the estimated repair costs broken down by subsystems. So, you've got structure, which, in this building, which is what we're looking at, you'd be talking about the limestone on the outside of the building that's in disrepair, and some of the settling issues on those columns as well. The plumbing, which we'll get into once we talk about the specific building slides, that is a big one. That's an immediate need. Short term is the next one to two years. Immediate just has to happen immediately. Near term, three to five. Medium term, six to 10. And then, long term, and as we get further out, the numbers are a little less accurate just because conditions will change in the next six years, and then, this is something that constantly, a big deliverable is, we're going to take ownership of a program called Asset Calc, which will allow us to, as we make repairs, and as we schedule different maintenance items that we come across, this number will change, and we'll constantly keep our FCI updated for each facility. And as I said, this, this leads us to the idea of preventative versus deferred maintenance. And I wanted to spend a couple of slides just talking about that, because I know there were some questions when we had some Kulik items. And it makes sense to really understand those two concepts, as they're essential to the FCA and what this data represents. So, the first item is preventative maintenance, and this is just regular routine scheduled maintenance in facilities and the equipment inside the facilities. When we make these repairs, we cut down on emergency repairs, we cut down on unplanned downtime for our facilities, they lower the total cost of maintenance, and they also extend the life of the equipment. A simple example is changing furnace filters, which you can see here. I mean, everyone does that at home, I hope, and we should be doing it in all of our buildings. Deferred maintenance, on the other hand, is unperformed planned maintenance repairs and replacements. This comes usually from a lack of resources and/or a perceived low priority for repairs. And Joe mentioned the recession of 2008 and the lean years that followed. Administrators were left with tough decisions, they needed to make cuts. Some people didn't understand that deferred maintenance items are never a good investment. You get a short-term gain, but you always end up paying for them in the long run. They lead to faster deterioration, lower performance, much higher costs. IFMA, which is the International Facility Management Association, some of these costs can be 30 times the amount of planned repairs if repairs aren't actually made in a timely fashion. So, that just escalates the cost, and you're getting the same thing out of those costs, so it's just not a good investment. The example I used here is just not replacing a furnace filter. Now, you'd say, so you don't change your furnace for filter. It just gets dirtier, and then, but then eventually, what happens is that furnace can't draw in air, the equipment stays hot, it runs for longer because it doesn't work as efficiently, and then parts start to deteriorate, and then all of a sudden, a piece of equipment that was supposed to last 15 to 20 years maybe lasts 10 years, and all the while, you're spending more money on a technician to keep the thing running and replacing it sooner. And I kind of made a chart based on a formula that's an adopted industry standard, and I have to remember where it's from. I believe it's IFMA. It looks at the cost of $2,000 furnace maintenance over 20 years' time. You would expect to pay about $3,300 in total preventative maintenance, changing filters, belts, annual inspections, and you really end up spending about $6,000 in total deferred maintenance over that same period if you don't do that maintenance in a timely manner. That brings the total cost up to about $9,400, which is nearly three times the price that you would expect to pay if you actually did the maintenance when you're supposed to do it. And this same formula roughly can predict deferred maintenance costs for other equipment, so just imagine if it wasn't so just imagine if it wasn't a $2,000 piece of equipment, if it was a $20,000 or a $2 million piece of equipment, this chart would roughly work the same way, it's just that the numbers would get higher and higher. And the same can be said about buildings. So, I also wanted to talk a little bit about the repair and maintenance budget deficit by building. There's also an industry standard for repair and maintenance budgeting. It's a 2% to 6% range of the estimated replacement value for a building. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, and you'll remember that from being what you calculate your FCI with. So, repair and maintenance, or RNM, includes repair, replacement, and renewal projects that keep a facility operating as intended. Capital spending covers some RNM spending due to city policy, so the budget deficit is slightly less significant than is shown. Actual RNM budgets here equal the total of 101, 265, 775, which is repair and maintenance under facilities, 818, which is contractual services, and 931, which is facilities maintenance. And those, those total numbers are divided by the square footage of individual buildings, and then those are attributed to the columns of the buildings. So, City Hall Police Department, their suggested annual RNM budget, if we use 3%, which is conservative, because it's in the middle of the 2% to 6% range, says that we should expect to spend about $326,000 in City Hall and Police Department maintaining equipment and building components. Department of Public Works is close in square footage, and it's close in numbers, it's about $300,000. Fire Station Number One and Two are smaller, so they both total about $150,000 together. And the Community Center is almost the same size as City Hall Police Department, so its suggested budget is $317,000. The actual budget, as you can see on the next row, is significantly smaller than, than the actual suggested, and that leaves a deficit. And as I said, the deficit is bridged a little bit by some capital spending, but there is definitely a deficit, and as the earlier slide showed, deferred maintenance ends up costing even more money over the long run. The estimated replacement value as well for each building is the very bottom row. I wanted to include a, a little cheat sheet on energy consumption by building because it, it makes sense to see the numbers side-by-side for our big five buildings. Electricity cost is pretty high at City Hall. I think that's mainly because we have three air handler units in the boiler room that are all running constantly, and they're 60 years old and should probably be replaced. Gas cost is a little bit high, but that's just because we have a gas boiler, and it's an older boiler. But if you look at the three big ones, City Hall, PD, Department of Public Works, and the Community Center, are all over $40,000 spent per year on energy, and that's because primarily, again, they have old HVAC equipment that is not efficient. The FCI.
Why don't we, why don't we pause here between each section? Did, through the chair, did council have any questions for James at this point? No? Okay.
Actually, through the chair, did you say that regarding the energy consumption, that all of these buildings, well, the City Hall, Department of Public Works, and the Community Center have, well, I know the Community Center has older, I don't, I don't remember the term to use, but, so all three of those buildings have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's older HVAC, which is your heating and your cooling, and all those systems are inefficient, and they're less efficient because they're not modern systems. Kulik is worse than others, and some of that will kind of show itself once we get into individual building slides, because I do address sustainability issues for each of these five buildings specifically.
Through the chair, just while we're looking at, at this slide, I think I scrutinized the City Hall numbers a little bit more than the others, and they seemed somewhat in alignment with, you know, my experience as a homeowner and a utility payer. But the one that stands out that I don't quite understand is the high gas usage for, for DPW. Can you just explain a little bit about why that's so much higher?
Yeah, there is, there is a reason. I mean, as I said, one of the reasons is inefficient HVAC equipment, but the other reason is the DPW has a lot of, it, it's large in square footage, and it has very high ceilings, and we're using gas, unit heaters, and garages, and those garages are opening and closing throughout the day. So, when you're in your winter months, a lot of heat escapes, and then a lot of space has to be reheated afterwards. And that's just the nature of the beast because we have all the heavy equipment that's got to go in and out of all those big doors all at the same time every day.
Okay.
That's where the disparity comes from.
One building that's not in here, I think it's just lumped into Fire Station One, is the Historical Museum.
Right.
This is a deep dive, but I noticed that the Historical Museum kilowatt per hour is a lot more than any other, other buildings, and I was curious about that. You can look at that later, but I was like, huh, they seem to be paying a lot more than the rest of the buildings.
Okay. That's something that I would have to get back to.
19 cents to 13 cents, 12 cents, that's.
Through, through the chair, that may be because they are not billed through the city. I believe they have their own separate account. So, they would be like a homeowner, you know, has their own account. I think that's why.
No, that, I get what you're saying, and that, that probably is the disparity there.
Yeah. So, that's what I suspected.
Part of our massive payment plan.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, or? So, to move on, again, the Facilities Condition Index, I'm going to show the condition indexes for all of those same buildings, so I just want to again say that the FCI is the total cost of existing deficiencies over the current estimated replacement value for each facility. And the FCI is a tool, again, it's an industry standard benchmark that's used to assess current and projected conditions for a building. The FCI typically gets worse as deferred maintenance items are better understood, so as a clearer picture is made, those numbers get worse. Unknowns are discovered, and they get better as repairs are made. Unfortunately, typically, these things get worse with older buildings because costs are just increasing along with the age. They especially can get worse when you don't know exactly what's wrong with the buildings. They capture, this, this is a tool that captures backlog much better than future alterations, which goes to the sustainability issue. A lot of that is seen as, as an improvement, whereas FCI is much better at looking at like-for-like. If there's a broken furnace, we replace that with the same furnace, and then we get a price. If there is a broken AC unit, same thing. Distribution panel for electrical gets replaced with the same-sized panel whether the building needs more electricity or not. So, it's best used because of this in conjunction with other data, including things like mission criticality, facility age, sustainability, equity, and space needs. The FCI index grading, what does it say? And this isn't always the case, but it, it gives us a good idea of what these different grades mean. If something's good, it's something that we should maintain as usual. If something is bare, it's something that we should work towards repairing, but it's not, nothing that would necessarily cause a lot of concern yet. If we're in the poor categorization, we need to look at immediate renewal and possible replacement if other variables call for it. And when we're in critical, replacement is likely necessary, and it's, the reason people say that is because a lot of times, the return on investment is not there if you're spending over a third of the cost of replacing a building to repair a building. So, the big five building FCI grades, you can see here, these properties, again, represent approximately 85% of the city's total square footage. The replacement value, again, equals the total square footage multiplied by fair-market value for total square footage. And these numbers come from Bureau Veritas, and they're using industry standard numbers for both. The five-year RNM estimate that you see here includes Bureau Veritas's report items, additional sustainability, some additional sustainability items, accessibility projects outside of the FCI scope, and then other capital improvements that were approved by council. So, the five-year estimate also includes current fiscal year. So, we've basically condensed six years of BV spending into one year because we're already so close to the next fiscal year, and our immediate needs can't just be rescheduled. So, it gets condensed as opposed to scheduling year six as a year seven, or year five as year six. These numbers get worse as identified again. Planned repairs, when they're deferred, these numbers increase. So, City Hall and Police Department, I kind of run through this. City Hall and Police Department's five-year repair and maintenance estimate is around $2.7 million. DPW's is around 2.3. Fire Station Number One and Two look a little better. We'll get into it. There's a reason for that. They're smaller buildings, and there's some numbers that aren't necessarily included on the FCI index that tend to make these smaller facilities look better, although Fire Station Two's size actually makes it closer to critical on that five-year grade. The Community Center total five-year is about $3 million, and you can see the replacement values, which we already saw, right underneath all of these repairs. And that'll give you an idea of where that actual score comes from. And you'll see that all of ours are within poor, and then the last two I would consider very close to critical because they're at that number right underneath 30%.
Through the chair, when we talk about replacement value, we are, we are looking at replacing like-for-like.
Right.
Same size, same materials, basically the same materials, the same equipment, et cetera.
So, so I'll say that estimated replacement value doesn't technically look at building materials, it looks at the square footage. So, for City Hall, it looks at the square footage of City Hall. Not do that right now. It looks at the square footage of City Hall, it looks at the fair-market real estate value of one square foot, and then it multiplies that number, and then it assigns that value as an estimated replacement value for City Hall. So, the expenditures forecast, yes, it does look at specific, if there's 20,000 square foot of carpet, it gives you a replacement cost for 20,000 square foot of carpet, whereas the total replacement value does not necessarily dive into that level of detail.
Through the chair, so I guess piggybacking off of that, are there any reasonable assumptions that could be made that, that sort of actual replacement or construction of a new facility might be more or less or similar to the, to the replacement value?
I would say, I would say that the replacement value, so, yes, and I would also point out that the five-year RNM estimates would also probably increase if we're talking about realistic dollars, because these, these numbers only represent capital renewal figures, they do not represent construction costs, contingency costs, and any other material increase or adjusted inflation above 3%. So, it is likely that if you had to build a $10 million facility, that you would pay between 8% and 12%, possibly more, I haven't really researched a lot of that, in construction costs for administrative, construction, and contingency and other items. So, both, both, both of those would be higher, probably by a similar percentage, which is why it's easier to just look at them without all those costs.
Also, on this slide, through the chair, so I didn't scrutinize these slides before this session, I did look at the larger packets, and I'm, I'm struggling with figuring out where these five-year FCI scores come from, because they look different to me than the FCI scores that are basically like on the second page of each facility.
Yeah, these, these are somewhat different because we've adjusted some of the numbers based on estimates that we had prior, and there's also some improvements that were included on this that were outside of the scope of the FCA because they weren't like-for-like, so they fell outside of the traditional scope for that study. So, these numbers are a little bit higher, and I think I actually have in front of me how much higher they're.
Should we look at the slide before us as being more accurate, or the larger packet?
I would say this larger packet. We can get into, we can get into specifics. Appendix F, as I said, on these reports, it will go through line-by-line items, and I, I don't know that the CIP numbers were included. Does council have the CIP spreadsheet that shows our line-for-line expenditures?
Not in this packet, that's, that's available on the website under the capital plan, but I want to clarify your question, Kay, because I want to make sure we're not confused. You're asking which is the more accurate number, the numbers in this presentation or the numbers in the report?
Correct.
Now.
The numbers in this presentation specifically, this slide will be more accurate because they actually include numbers that were not included in the scope of the FCA study.
Okay.
Through the chair, that's what I was trying to get at in my introduction memo, is not all the numbers in the report represent the full true cost, and James had also mentioned, you know, this also includes that sixth year, our current fiscal year crisis, so it's a bit more compressed as well.
Yeah.
Which the report wouldn't have included.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this slide? So, this is going to take us into the individual building slides, the first of which we'll look at is City Hall, and then, again, the five-year grade for City Hall is 26%, which is poor. Some of the key findings are going to sound familiar for a lot of these buildings once we get into them. Shared mechanical equipment with the police station is one of the characteristics of this building, but like other buildings, the HVAC system is approaching end-of-service life. It's not functioning as intended. There's, there's repairs that have been made, and the light boiler and some of the other air handlers have scaled properly to meet the current demand of this building. The electrical system here is near capacity. Unplanned improvements have added to the complexity of fixing that electrical system. We don't have a lot of as-built, there's some rooms that have some issues, and you really have to investigate everything to fix anything in many ways. One of the largest issues with this building and the police department is the stormwater and sanitary system. Those are approaching end-of-service life, and you'll see a little bit about that on the next slide. And then our front ADA lift is in need of replacement soon. I believe it's within the next three to five years.
I have a, I have a couple of questions about that lift. I, I know it was an interim solution because the elevator that is actually in this building is like a death trap.
Yeah.
And it's very old, creepy, scary. I don't know if any of you have been in it. I highly encourage a ride in it if it operates, and it barely fits a wheelchair. And so, we put the lift in when City Hall was slightly modified, what was that, in 2013?
2009 and 10.
2009 and 10, so I'm somewhat disappointed that it's only lasted a decade, and I don't know if that was the life of that lift, but it was never communicated that we saw what the life of that lift was going to be a decade ago.
I'm not sure, I'm assuming that that would not be the typical lifespan of a lift, but it is probably the lifespan of this lift. If that makes sense.
I hear you.
There's some, some issues, I mean, I think that replacing this lift would be a little bit larger investment, and if that would have been made when it was, when that repair was made, maybe it would have lasted a little bit longer.
Yeah, it was resource constraints at the, at the time.
Exactly, and that's, that is really what leans into a lot of this deferred maintenance. This is just, there's not enough money to go around.
I also presume that the lift gets used pretty frequently every day because it's unusual to have your building, when you, usually when you walk into a building, you're on the first floor, but here you have to go up or down. There's, you know, so, you have to take the lift if you have a mobility need, right?
It does get used every day.
It must get used very frequently.
And it's a conveyance system. And it's a conveyance system that was basically built into an existing location, if I understand it correctly. Part of it was a closet, the other part was just a.
Was my office when I worked here with the Michigan Suburban Lines.
Really?
Yep.
And then it just goes up through a building chase. So, I mean.
Deep history with this building.
I think part of the reason, part of the reason that it suggested for replacement is just because it's almost a custom-built lift in a confined location as opposed to what should probably be an elevator in the first place and not actually a lift.
I remember lots of conversations with the council and the mayor at the time about what to do with the limited funds that we had.
So again, and we just looked at that slide, but the five-year R and M estimate is about $2.7 million for City Hall and Police Department combined. Likes to get in my way. So I, I highlighted a repair for each facility in these slides. The stormwater system is a big one for City Hall. And what that does is it transfers rain and snow from the roof, down the walls, through the pipes, into the crock underneath the foundation where we're standing. And then from there, it passes back onto the sewer. And if you remember the flood, which I'm sure everyone does, what we had there is a crock that collapsed, caused a blockage, and then all of that water from a hundred year storm went down, hit that blockage, had nowhere to go, and came back up through the system or any crack it could find. And then it came through the subduct work in the election storage area and flooded everything. So that's kind of what happens when croc gets 60 years old. It's just, it's like, if you look at it like a, like an artery, it basically sees so much over time that it's, it's constricted, just like an artery with plaque, rust, other things, and then it just can't pass water at the same level. This building was also built in a time when 100-year storms actually occurred every 100 years. That's not the case. I mean, we've had a few already this year and we had a few last year. So even if the pipes were sized appropriately for today's conditions, they would still have a lower, a lower passage. And that goes to operational efficiency because every time City Hall floods, we need to spend money to clean all the carpet, replace all the carpet, fix the walls, fix the vinyl base and everything else. Capital investment estimate in the system expenditure forecast for that includes a $10,000 plumbing study that would just look at, they would identify where everything is beforehand because in order to get to it, and I should have included a picture from the, the flood damage, we had to dig about eight feet and break through cement flooring to get to that crock as it was under the lift in the back, the mechanical room for that lift. So that's why that price is high. It's over $420,000 because it's very difficult to get to that crock. And if you look at the system expenditure forecast, this kind of shows a lot of the costs for the next 20 years for this building.
Through the chair. I'm assuming you're going to have slides for these, for every facility. So, so speaking in general on these slides, and I'm just going to put out a hypothetical, again, this is a hypothetical. If, if council in the next year or so, or two years, makes the determination that we're going to replace City Hall in 2033, you know, that's the plan going forward. Are some of these near and midterm items, can we, can we realistically say, you know, we can not do these items because the plan is to replace the building? So like the midterm, you have $124,000 in roofing. You know, you're looking at six to 10 years. If you're going to replace that building, a building, in 12 years, wouldn't it make sense to just say not to invest that $124 since it's, the building's not going to be of use after 12 years?
Yeah, that would be a discussion. I think that's kind of what this, this is a step one in that discussion. I think based on this data, other larger decisions like that do need to be made. And then you would, you would look at this. If this was a building that you plan on replacing in 12 years, it's likely that you could defer some maintenance because if you're replacing the building, then that, the maintenance costs that escalate over 20 years don't matter because you're vacating that building in 12. So you'd be correct in that.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. So the last slide, which will be the, the third slide for most of these buildings, and then we can get into any other specifics as they come up, is the space study slide, some sustainability upgrades, and then we'll look at the benchmarking for energy usage between the median of a building of the same size. So the space study counted in this building is about 11,000 total square foot. Based on the current configuration, the ideal square footage for this building is about 8,000 feet. So it's actually a little bit larger than it would appear. But that, that, again, that number, you, you kind of have to make sense of it. It doesn't necessarily say that this building is configured properly. If you need 10,000 square feet of office and you have 5,000 square feet of lobby and 5,000 square feet of an ice rink, then technically you have enough square footage, but you just don't have the proper configuration. And this number doesn't really record the proper configuration, if that makes sense. The future needs for City Hall are closer to 11,000 square feet, which is slight, but at the same time, it's difficult to expand City Hall because of the current building materials that were reused and the lack of property on this site. We can go to sustainability upgrades. The initial investment, and there is a section for the sustainability updates, or upgrades rather, you can see it's about $45,000 of an initial investment. And that initial investment will reduce the price of energy consumed in this building by about $15,000. It will save us 1,100 therms, 76 k kilowatts of electricity per hour, 160 kilogallons of water, and 3.06 year payback, which basically means that the investments that we make on these sustainability projects will pay themselves back in a little over three years. And in terms of carbon emissions, that's about 11 cars off the road. And if you look in the middle there, you'll see our weather normalized source, electrical, or I'm sorry, energy usage. And that just kind of shows where City Hall ranks with the rest of the buildings of the same size. About 20% higher than the median is our current 12-year forecast. And then the baseline, which extends over three or four years, shows that City Hall and the Police Department combined are about 46% higher than the median on average.
Through the chair. All right, the middle section I don't understand. Explain it to me like I'm in kindergarten.
So, so the 141 represents the amount of energy usage in KBTU. I'm, I'm not a sustainability person, so I, it's hard for me to get that, but it's the amount of energy divided by square footage. So if this building, if this building is 11,000 square feet, they look at the square footage, they look at the energy consumed, and then they divide that, they come up with this number, which happens to be 141. And then they compare that to, and this is all done through Portfolio, Portfolio Manager. And they will compare our value per square footage to a median of like a theoretical building with the same weather forecast and the same square footage. And we are about 20% higher over a 12-month period than that similar building, that theoretical similar building. And we're about 46.9% higher over a larger three-year, four-year time period.
Okay.
So basically, we're using more power than the lower half of that number.
And still on the slide, what is the nature of the anticipated growth needed in future square footage?
So that's, that's based on, there's industry standards, as I mentioned, for like a director's office, meeting room, classroom spaces and things like that. There's three or four different standards, and then those are all kind of averaged out, come up with a standard per building, or per, per room. Departments filled out a questionnaire that looked at how many rooms each, each department would require. It, it makes a little bit more sense when we get into other buildings for like police and fire because there's an FPA standards for fire that look at apparatus room sizes based on your fleet, different, different requirements for like fire extinguisher maintenance, gear extractor and other items like that. And these, and again, this will make more sense when we get into fire, but the current fire stations don't have these things. And that's kind of something that's necessary for modern firefighting. So it calculates the total square footage that we currently have. It looks at everything that we should have, and then the future number is what we should have. So if you look at City Hall, we're currently, future, we're about 1,200, no, I'm sorry. I'm terrible at math. 300 square foot is short. So we're close to being right-sized. Again, this is not, that, this number is not a science. There's also, there's a lot more variables that can go into space studies and that's something that'll get hammered out in step two as well.
I, I do have a follow-up question on that. And I know we're still waiting for the space study, but as a casual observer of upstairs where everybody works in City Hall, it looks like you're packed in there like sardines and people are sharing offices. And interns and, you know, everybody, there's like four workspaces in one small room that could.
And there are, and there are some of, some of these questions will, some of these numbers will change as we do follow-ups. Basically, what we have is a space study. We go through it and we say like, this doesn't make sense, or this was a mathematical error. We have not had the final delivered for space studies yet. It should include staffing, but looking at this number, I'm assuming that it's missing something. Because when we did the onsite assessments, looking at current, I think the desks were counted, square footage was counted. It's possible that staffing was omitted from this first number. It is definitely something that I will have to follow up with BV on.
Through the chair, a couple of things that have changed that you've probably observed. One of our strategies has been hiring more part-time and intern work. We definitely don't have desk space. Most of them sit in the corridors right now against the wall. We've converted the upstairs conference room into a shared office space as kind of a post-pandemic strategy, thinking we need fewer in-person conferences. And that's actually been, become the most popular room. So we have four desks in there that are shared intermittently throughout.
Sure, okay.
Elections has changed too. So right now, the city clerk's office has leased a election storage space in the storage room because election requirements for equipment and security have changed as well.
Okay.
Just some examples.
Okay, so we have, we have the appropriate space, but poorly configured, basically.
That's part of it. And I, I would say as well that one of the final deliverables is a spreadsheet that we can manipulate ourselves to, based on conversations, to like, to add space here, add space there, based on further discussion on what we actually require for every department and what we need going into the future.
Right.
Well, and I'm sorry, through the chair, you could look at this room right here. You could eliminate that ramp, I'm sorry, you could eliminate the stairs, put that, create that as a ramp and you've gained all of that space. But we have two, two access areas that don't necessarily need to exist independently.
Right. And, and a lot of this benchmarking and a lot of this study doesn't necessarily get into the minutia because really to, to look at a lot of the specifics on that type of level would increase costs significantly and possibly not provide data that's actually useful. This broad data should be enough for us to understand the way our facilities work and make decisions on what we should do with them. And if we're all ready, we can move on to the Police Department. So the police station, again, it shares a grade. It shares a grade with City Hall, which is 26% poor. Key findings here, again, shared equipment. Again, HVAC system is approaching end of service life. It's a little different in the Police Department because they have a lot of mini splits that are providing heat. And for someone that's not familiar with that term, it's, it's basically a condenser on the top that provides the AC and then there's a unit on the wall. So if you're ever in the police dispatch area, you'll see there's a unit on the wall that provides heat and air for dispatch. And that's despite the fact that there are vents and ductwork going to dispatch. It's just that the system is so not functioning properly that that's needed to supplement the actual air handler units and the boiler in the basement. The electrical system over there is near capacity again. This presents a specific problem for the Police Department because they're trying to implement a new radio communication system and they need that radio communication system to maintain accreditation. And right now, they do not have the electrical capacity. So some work will have to be made to get that comm system in place. And then again, as City Hall, they have limestone damage on the outside, columns are settling, and that is earmarked for a structural engineering study as well. Five-year R and M estimate combined with City Hall, again, is 2.7. Since, since we've already seen the expenditure forecast, I opted to include a picture here that just looks at the repair highlight. When we say scheduled replacement, what we're looking at is like a furnace can last 20 years. Galvanized pipe, which you see here, should last about 60 years, maybe a little bit less, 50 to 60. We're over 60 or quickly approaching 60 and it's rusted through and it has a hole. And that is a sanitary line. And when I say sanitary line, what I mean is the line going up and down, goes down to the basement, into the sewer and out through the back of the building, and the two lines going in the sides are connected to toilets in jail cells three and four. As you can see, when those toilets are flushed, water can come out of that hole and then that water hits the mechanical shaft and then permeates, concrete leaks into the basement and the men's locker room happens to be under that mechanical shaft. So this is a repair that's currently in place, but this gives you, gives you an explanation of why it's important to, when you see a number that says $300,000 to replace all of the galvanized piping and sanitary piping throughout these two stations, or campuses rather, that is why, because they rust through and then we end up with gray water in our locker rooms and offices. And that, I would say, is an employee safety issue.
Through the chair, that $368,000, would that, would we have an equivalent cost if we went to something like a PVC pipe rather than the cast iron?
Yeah, that would be for PVC. Yeah, that, that, that number is for modern piping. So it would basically remove all the sanitary lines throughout City Hall, Police Department. And I believe that number, and I would have to check to make sure, includes supply lines So if we could move on to the space study for the Police Department, this makes a little bit more sense if we don't look at the current ideal. Again, the current ideal only looks at what is in the building. So to kind of make sense of that number, if we looked at the Police Department hallway, we would look at the directors, or the, I'm sorry, the chief's office, the assistant chief, their clerical secretary, a few other offices, and then it would just see those. It wouldn't actually look at staffing. It just looks at the director's office. If you put a director in a broom closet, that report is going to say, well, that director's office should be a little bit larger than a broom closet. So then you get a deficiency, you get maybe 200 square feet. But it's not actually looking at staffing to give you the current ideal square footage, which is part of the reason that we really have to take these deliverables and make them our own, continuously refine them to make sure that they work for us.
Through the chair, would it, would it include the jail cells, the shooting range, the workout gym, storage?
Yes, it does. But, so again, this is one of those things where it's like for like. So when they go down there and they measure the gym, they're not telling you that for 30 officers, you should have a larger gym. They're just telling you that your gym should be 400 square feet. Your gym is 400 square feet. That gym is the ideal. feet, that gym is the ideal size. So that's why these first two numbers seem a little bit confusing, and maybe don't work for us. Now, and that's probably on me for including this current ideal square footage. The one that makes more sense for the police department here is definitely the future needed square footage, which is based on the square footage that they need to maintain accreditation. That's different things like their criminal investigation room, detective offices, just the square footage for everything that you need to run a modern police force. And again, that's, it's difficult to expand the police station in the current location because there's not a lot of property, and the building composition just makes it difficult to expand. And if you actually look at the future needed square footage for the police department, you'll see that that's, the station is about two-thirds the size that it should be for a modern police department that has all the amenity, the amenities that we need for to maintain accreditation.
Through the chair, I wonder if you would just explain how this factors in. I've heard anecdotally that there are insufficient facilities for our women officers. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
That is true, and there is a slide that talks about that specifically with the fire station, not so much the police department. But the police department does have a similar problem in that that building was built at a time where gender equity was not really a thought. It's the same with the fire department. Those improvements were really made when they were needed. They weren't made ahead of time. They weren't, they were like, we're hiring female officers, we're hiring female firefighters, now we need to make something quickly. And then, so they're, it's similar to the lift at the front of the building in that they used whatever space they could to accommodate that. And the police department is definitely one of those buildings. We can move on to the Department of Public Works. So the key finding, which is actually in this picture, is that our salt barn needs a replacement. It's made of wood. It was built in the 80s, which doesn't seem that old, but salt and wood and moisture are not good. And if, there was a picture from the side of the building, you would see the side of the building is actually bulging from some of the salt storage and combating the elements. If you looked inside of the building, you would see that some of the joists on top are broken, and salt getting wet is not good. But moving on, there are also settlement issues in a lot of our older structures. And what this means is that you can see cracks in walls, there are doors that used to open by hand and now can only be closed by foot. There's HVAC and electrical needs, they're all nearing the end of service life as well. This building represents the largest consumer of combined energy in the city portfolio. The five-year R&amp;M maintenance spending estimate is about 2.3 million. The large size of the complex means that the grade is poor, and it was 24%, because it's, there's a lot of square footage to heat up that additional cost. As I mentioned, the repair highlight I'd like to look at is the wooden salt barn built in the 80s. So the back of the yard, it's an operational efficiency item because as salt gets wet, it clumps up, and it doesn't spread evenly across the roadways. Sometimes it gets stuck at the bottom, which means our salt trucks can't go as far as they normally would with a full load, which means they got to come back to the yard and they can't efficiently salt the roads. The capital investment for replacing this in a like-for-like is $484,000. And you can see the system expenditure forecast for our building there. I think most of this has been changed, I'm sorry, has been changed before it made it here. Totals over 20 years are about 4.3. And again, these numbers will change as conditions change, but the first five years are relatively The space study for DPW found that we're pretty right-sized, or right-sized now, our current ideal is right-sized, and the future needed square footage is close to right as well. This number may not be as straightforward for DPW because there's a lot of mixed purpose areas, and we are more dependent on fleet than we are staff. So there's a lot of garages. Our motor pool sees cars in and out, and they're more based on fleet size and what they're maintaining than their actual mechanics. Sustainability upgrades for the building, they total about $47,000. It's about a $7,000 cost reduction annually, 2,800 therms, 34 K kilowatt hours annually, 110 K gals. It's about a 6.49 year payback, and that's the equivalent of seven cars off the road. As we talked about, the reason our gas is up, or our gas being higher puts us at about 30% higher than the median in our normalized electrical usage, or energy usage. And we can move on to the next building unless someone asks questions about DPW. So fire station number one, our first fire station, Fire Station Headquarters. Settling issues require structural assessment. Similar to the DPW, you see issues with doors, you can see cracks, cracks in the block, cracks on the inside of the building. And there's some issues with the flooring that's going to require a structural engineer to come out and assess and do a report. This is a building where the air conditioning is poorly designed, there's a furnace inside of a TV room, there's no outside air brought in, it just recycles the air from that room and then distributes it throughout in a little bit cooler fashion. Radiators are approaching end of service life. This building was built in 1956, so those radiators have been there for a long time, and they don't do a great job at maintaining an ideal temperature for our firefighters. The admin offices rely on window DC units, attest to how hot it gets in her office because of this. The five-year R&amp;M estimate here, yeah, about 80 degrees, is $729,000, which doesn't seem like a lot, and I do think that that's, it doesn't include, well, I know that it doesn't include some asbestos remediation that really has to happen before a lot of these improvements can happen. And the small square footage footprint of the building means that that will drive the FCI grade up considerably, just based on that work alone. The repair highlight that we want to look at here is the sleeping quarters, lockers, and restrooms that didn't originally include women's facilities. The fire station dorm lockers and restrooms were built at a time where there weren't a lot of female firefighters. That's just the reality of it. Now there are, and again, as they hired female firefighters, what they did is they quickly, quickly put together facilities for those firefighters. They basically converted a shower stall into a toilet and washroom. There's no electrical outlets in it, it's small, it's not a great solution, it definitely needs to be improved upon. Capital investment for that would be about $60,000. And this is the system expenditure forecast that looks at the larger picture.
I have a question or a comment. I was on council when we approved this expenditure to retrofit, and I think it really goes to show the difference of having a facilities manager in place, because I know we spent a little bit of money to retrofit the bathroom, but I don't remember anybody telling council that there would be no electrical systems in that bathroom. And I didn't even think we asked, because who would assume that there would be no electrical systems in a bathroom? You know what, right?
Yeah, and I think it's one of those difficult situations where a repair needs to be made immediately, and the people making that repair do the best with what they have available, and that's just how it happens.
Yes, I know the new female firefighter needed to be onboarded, and the equity of, you know, having an appropriate facilities for a female firefighter needed was paramount, right? I get it, but I'm just making a comment, you know, we didn't have you two, three years ago, or how long ago that decision was made.
Right.
Well, through the chair, I think what happened back then was the issue of every department had, was responsible for their building, so the chief at the time probably focused on, let's get, you know, let's get some shower and toilet facilities in there, and, you know, that was the main focus, and no thought of, let's create a whole bathroom for employees to use.
I get it.
Yeah, and then, and to piggyback off that comment, one of the problems with decentralized authority of buildings is that one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing, so you can't really prioritize across your whole portfolio in some of these, some of these concerns aren't apparent, and then they, you just, you have to rush your repairs, and then you end up just, you're at the bidding of the problem that you're trying to address instead of planning ahead of time. And then that just leads to worse results, that's how it works.
Yeah, I think my other comment is too, is, and I don't see it in any of your, the reports here, because I think it's being fair about repair, but, I mean, nowhere doesn't say that this police station is outdated. It is no longer designed to fit modern fire and EMT facilities. And I feel like it's like the patchwork doll, right? Every time there's an upgrade or a change in equipment, we retrofit the building in order to accept that new equipment.
Right.
And it's done on a rolling basis because equipment changes over time. It's like when the new fire truck was bought, and nobody thought of looking at the height of the new truck, and then we realized we needed to add the heightened doorways to the fire station, so after the, after fact. So I just feel like that's what's not being stated here.
Yeah.
That it really is truly inadequate building.
Yeah, and to add on to that, so you're talking about the 1950s, and gender equity wasn't really a thought for many at the time, neither was the internet, neither was modern technology, there's just, there's so many things that have changed. Building technology, we were using galvanized pipes, we're using lead, we're using things that, that right now we know are terrible ideas. Sustainability wasn't something anyone cared about, no one knew what a green project was. There were just different values, different times, different building materials, and you can't really expect a building that was built in the 50s to house a modern department today unless significant changes are made.
Through the chair, I'd also just clarify that decentralized model isn't atypical for local governments. Some of our peers--
Can you explain what that means? What do you mean by that?
Meaning, it's not surprising that cities had a lack of centralized facilities. Most don't, and still don't today, after some of our colleagues are also just making their first facilities management hires. I know that through conversations. So the decentralized model, though it isn't efficient, that is an unfortunate byproduct of local government, historically speaking. I just wanted to be clear, I don't think Ferndale is necessarily--
Right.
--respect, it's just the nature of local government.
It's definitely a problem that Ferndale should--
In the back.
--neighboring communities, even state and federal governments, the same with the 2008 recession that caused some deferred maintenance. We weren't the only city that had to defer some maintenance, everyone did it. That's why some of the infrastructure issues we're having now are being addressed and are as expensive as they are. And to go on to this, the space study here actually, I think, is a good metric because we're using NFPA standards on spacing for the fire station, and it shows that our fire station headquarters is 9,000 total square feet now, and it should be about 26,000 square feet once all of the modern amenities for a fire station are included in that square footage estimate. The sustainability upgrades are not as substantial for this building, and that's because it's a smaller building. And it's also because the metric that looked at sustainability projects had a seven-year payback as the max. So anything that occurred over that was not included on the sustainability upgrades. So that would be kind of considered a green project if we replaced the boiler and the domestic hot water heater downstairs at the fire station. It may take 20 years for that to pay back, but the amount of energy and electricity that that would save is quite substantial. But that's not included because it doesn't pay back, it pays back over a longer period of time. And if you look at a boiler, that boiler should last 25 years, so even if it does take 20 years to pay back in energy, it's still a sound investment, it's just not necessarily included on this metric. And this is one of our buildings that is actually close to the median. I think it's one of our best buildings in terms of energy usage. It's a 12% higher than the median for the last 12 years, and 27 for the baseline, which is just extended over three or four years. We can move on. Can move on to Fire Station Two. There are some similarities here. It has a poorly designed AC system that's approaching the end of life. Asbestos remediation again on the upper floor, I can't remember if I mentioned that. It adds a significant cost to improving the upper floor. Radiators, again, this building was built in the 50s, these are old, they don't provide ideal temperatures. Firefighters don't like being 90 degrees, and neither do all of the servers and the internet technology that keeps the 911 system operating. Boiler water heater were replaced in 2021 with a high-efficiency system that will show some energy improvements. The small size of this station, this station as well is undersized, and because of that, that's why we see that 29% critical, even though our five-year estimate is a little bit closer to 500,000. Really, the estimated total value is affected by that small square footage footprint. So even though it's less money, it's still critical, or one percentage away from being critical. And I would argue that the asbestos remediation would put us in a critical for this building. And then the repair highlight I'd like to look at for this building is the AC furnace system that's poorly designed, nearing end of life. Again, this is an AC system that doesn't bring in outside air. You'll say, why is that important? Because it's not actually bringing in oxygen from the outside, it is recirculating air from the inside. So if there's a fire, or if there's some kind of a contaminant in the air, it's not actually going to bring in oxygen, it's going to thin that out. It's also going to work a little less efficiently, depending on the time of the year. It's located right next to a bed in a dorm area, there's a thermostat that's controlled manually from that furnace, it's not actually on a centralized control system like the boiler, so you've got separate systems for heat, and you do air. It should be in a mechanical room, or at least a little further from the dorm room, because it doesn't make sense for a firefighter to be sleeping right next to a furnace. That's a sustainability and employee safety because there's no outside air that's brought in. Now, this is a good moment to look at this capital investment and maybe talk a little bit about what operational costs are. When I say that capital investment estimate is 7K, that cost is going to be much higher. It's not fair to include that in the benchmarking for the FCI because that's not the industry standard, but we should know that based on this repair, it's going to be a lot more than $7,000 because we're going to need to have a balance study, a mechanical study, because one probably didn't happen before they built this AC furnace system in the first place. I would guess that there's building code issues with the way it's built, it's going to need some electrical issues, it's going to need the ductwork to be redone, and it should probably be put in a mechanical space, which means there's some carpentry work on top of that. You're probably looking at $40,000 just to get the right kind of an AC unit in there. And that just kind of goes to show the disparity between this estimate and the actual realistic cost into repairing a system that has as many legacy issues as this one does.
Through the chair, just so we understand, why aren't those additional costs part of that, why weren't they included in the first place? Is there a function of how this process works that--
So--
Go ahead.
So you can adjust the pricing, so if we looked at this five-year, we could add 10% on the top and then assume, or we could come to an agreement on how much we should add to look at realistic pricing, but it's not fair to do-- But it's not fair to do that when you're looking at FCI because that benchmarking doesn't actually call for that. So it would kind of look like you're stacking or like cooking your books if you're taking an extra 10%, 12%, 15%. Even though it may show the true cost of that repair, it would also, it would also put out of whack your benchmarking and then your numbers would maybe not actually be valid numbers for what you want them to show you. And then additionally, you can, so the system expenditure forecast, while it is not meant to capture operational costs, there may be times where the numbers here, since they're based on a universal formula that's kind of an adopted industry standard format. Fire protection, so that, I believe, looks at adding fire suppression into the dorm room and other living spaces as required by building code. This is an old building, so it's not necessarily the case for this building, but they include that anyway because it is a safety issue. The way they come up with that number is they multiply the square footage by industry standard price per square footage of adding fire suppression. So that gives us an idea and a pretty good idea of how much it may cost. As we're looking to do this immediate concern, if we're looking at that specific project, what we would do is we would get quotes. Those quotes would come in, and if those quotes were higher on fire protection, what we would do is we would adjust this and that would, again, change the FCI and it would change our expenditure forecast as we, as we bring in specifics. And as I said, usually what happens when you get more specifics is your grades actually get worse. They seldom improve. And Fire Station Two, space study, again, based on NFPA standards, shows that that station is about 4,252 square foot of useful space and it should be about 12,000 square feet. Sustainability upgrades, again, they're low. It's a small building, systems aren't large, it's not really using the same amount of energy as some of our other buildings, bigger buildings. But it's not insignificant in that we can, we can make some improvements, we can save some costs, save some terms, electricity, K GALS, we get one car off the road and it's a 1.43 year payback. And you can see that this building baseline is actually in pretty good shape. It's right around the median at 2.96. And then the community center, this represents one of our other large buildings. You'll see, once we get to sustainability, it's also one of the buildings where we have the most opportunity to save cost on energy. The five-year grade is 29.16, I believe, 29.15. And that you would consider critical to poor. It's likely that some additional unknown costs would put you into that 30% range. And again, those aren't hard and fast grades. It's not that every building that's 30% necessarily needs to be replaced, but looking at other variables, if it makes sense, then 30% is a good number to start thinking about replacement. We've gone over some of the deficiencies in this building before. The HVAC system has been at the end of service life for a long time. The boiler is built in 1986. At some point, it, the chemical feed system that was meant to go in the water inside the boiler was discontinued and put out of service. That, that means someone has to go there almost every day and blow out some water to protect the system. That person happens to be me. The last couple of weeks, I've been checking on the building every single day to make sure that the boiler is running because I am afraid the boiler will stop running. And if it stops running, pipes do not respond well to 20-degree nights. So that system, not just the boiler, but there's, I believe, 12 classroom units. Every one of them is old, every one of them is a pain to get parts for. Most of them are discontinued, you have to use an equivalent from something else just to make it work. If a steam coil breaks, you have to get one custom built. And all these problems mean that every single little repair costs extra money and time and effort. The electrical system as well is nearing the end of service life. There is a main distribution panel inside the boiler room. You can actually see where the electrical comes in. And inside that boiler room, you see steam. It's a steam boiler, it's always damp in there. And then obviously, we had some problems with some water infiltration in the roof. And that problem didn't spring up in this July. That's, that's an ongoing problem and it's a 100-year-old building. So that distribution panel is made of metal and it contains electricity, both of which do not do well with water. The roof system on the entire building is nearing the end of its life. The boiler system roof, we know, is considered failed and that is not contained in this FCI report because that came from an engineering study that occurred after the onsite assessment. So that, again, would likely push us into 29, or push us into 30. It possibly wouldn't just based on square footage, but if I had to guess, I would say it probably does. The five-year R and M estimate for that building is about $3 million.
If I may, through the chair, so the HVAC for the community center, that 880,000. I imagine that this is an example of what you were speaking of earlier regarding deferred maintenance.
Yes, yeah. And so maybe not necessarily that, but I would say that the cost to keep this system running right now and the increased, as I said, discontinued parts, when something unplanned happens, it requires emergency overtime to repair. Not only that, but as a steam pipe fails, there's cement work, there's carpentry, you have to dig it up, pull into it, and you have to have an HVAC guy there, and sometimes you have to have electricians to maintain some of this other stuff. That 880,000 cost is more or less for replacing every piece of equipment. And that may not even be, I mean, that, that's just broadly what it roughly costs capitally to pull out everything. The deferred maintenance mostly just looks at actual maintenance costs. So maintenance costs would be in addition to that. And for an $800,000 improvement, you would assume, believe, maintenance costs are between 2% and 6% of that improvement per year. And then that kind of goes back to that slide that I showed where it shows like 3% of 800,000. I'm terrible at math, so I won't even, I'll hesitate to guess, but it's a lot of money. And then if maintenance was further deferred, then that cost could increase over time and build up to 30% higher than 3%, which is, again, I'm not a math guy, but I know that's bad.
If I may, to further add onto that comment, it's just that, if I may, and the reason why I described it as being deferred is because we've been talking about that boiler for some time, at least as long as I've been on council, so.
Right. And it's important to point out that the cost of replacing that boiler is always going to be the same. But what you're not seeing in this system expenditure forecast is the increased amount of money we're spending to maintain the boiler in its current state, which if Loreno is here, she would tell you is not great. Talked about the fire station not being in an ideal temperature. Kulik Community Center is never in an ideal temperature. There's at least a 10% difference between the front of the building and the back of the building. And as I said, you need to be onsite at that building mostly twice daily just to make sure it's still running and to release some water to protect that boiler.
Through the chair, that, the ownership issue is, going back to that, the ongoing work we're doing around the ownership issues is one of the reasons why we've hesitated investing the half million or so into replacing it until we can resolve that.
It's so expensive to replace the boiler. I just, I don't know. I guess, I'm not an expert, so.
Well, yeah, and I would say, number, number one, it's a very large boiler, it's an industrial boiler, it's feeding steam through a 26,000 square foot building. And on top of that, it puts that steam into 12 to 14 other units that are almost like a home furnace, if you want. It's an air handler unit, but it, it's typical to a home furnace and then it takes that hot water, it blows air through it, and then it heats the rest of the building. So when you say boiler, it's, it's an entire system. It's not just one boiler, it's, again, 14 other furnaces, 1, 2, 3, 4. There's two split systems, there's two condensers that provide air, there's two even larger air handler units in the basement that are from the late 80s, early 90s that need to be replaced. So it's a lot more than a boiler, yeah.
And continuing, through the chair, continuing on that. And again, we're looking at replacing like for like. If we were hypothetically, if we were to build a new community center from scratch, we wouldn't be putting in a quote-unquote boiler. We would be putting in modern furnace equipment.
Right, and I think that there, I mean, there are high-efficiency boilers that do provide efficiency and they do work well for commercial applications. Like Fire Station Two, we put a high-efficiency boiler in place with a hot water system that worked off of that boiler. And that's actually a good solution. But it's likely that a centralized boiler in a boiler room going across the 26,000 square foot steam boiler is probably not good. I know there, there was some talk in the past about putting two boilers in series, changing them over to water. I mean, the issue is there, there are so many different options better than a steam boiler in that boiler room that it's really, you're kind of hemmed in by, by the current building. Like, there's only so much you can do with that system, even a converted.
I guess that's what I was trying to get to. Is you're, you're limited to what you can do because of the current design and how the building was designed 100 years ago.
Right.
Which then was efficient.
Yeah, and if you ever want to tour the boiler room, I can show you a square on the wall that could be a coal chute from when the building was built. I mean, talk about technological advancement, that, that building shows it. And to even to, to go from steam to water, you would have to rip out almost all of the steam pipes and then you would have to put water pipes in. And I mean, and that, that's where it gets to your like for like. I don't think that that 800,000 would capture going to water because there's a lot of work associated with that that is not in this figure. And again, to go back to operation costs, that's such a huge construction project that you would need an engineer, you would need a study, someone's going to get that percentage for construction fees, there's going to be contingency, and there's probably going to be extra money for inflation material above that 3% that's baked into this data. So it's going to be a lot more expensive.
And, and continuing on, while that's happening, the building is pretty much useless. You know, you can't use it while all of this work is already done.
Right.
It would, you know, it would be, continue to be shut down.
Right, and then to go back to deferred maintenance, that's really the, the double problem with deferred maintenance is not only is it highly costly and inefficient, but at the same time, you have a building that's limping along instead of one that's working well. So you're paying more for less. Until those repairs are made. And I think we kind of went over this slide indirectly already. So we can move on to the space study, which, this is another one where, the more I see these numbers, I think, other than the fire station and police department, that they may not be as helpful as imagined and they may need to be kind of retooled to make sense for our portfolio. But this, this shows that there's about 17,000 usable space and I, I think that that number's probably off possibly because there was no power to the building when our condition assessment took place. Historically, we see there's about 25,000 to 26,000 square footage in that building. So that would put it about right size now using that ideal metric. Looking at ideal future, that looks at different parks amenities that the department thought was important. Again, it's a little less straightforward than PD and fire, and that would be more of a, more of a larger discussion on programming and what exactly you need in a community center because it is so variable by community. The sustainability upgrades here are the largest for the big five buildings and that's, as we've been talking about, because the technology in that building is so old. 100,000 initial investment will show us 25,000 cost savings annually, it'll save 12K terms, 130K kilowatt hours, 23K GALS with a 4.69 year payback and the equivalent of 28 cars and carbon off the road. The weather normalized, energy usage is bad. It is nearly 95% with current 12-month figures, and it is even worse with a baseline that extends over three or four years, which just means that for the square footage of this building compared to the average building of these same square footage, the energy usage is about 131% higher. And that's mostly because of the HVAC and all these other old systems that are just struggling to keep the building at 70 degrees. Or even 65 in some areas. So I'll hand it over to Joe. That's the data. I know it can be overwhelming, but I think it also presents an opportunity and a path forward and it makes a lot more possible that wouldn't be possible if we didn't actually have.
Yeah, thank you, James. And that's the spirit of which I would transition. We can't make data-driven decisions without data. So to summarize in the transition, we have old things and progressive ambitions.
Go closer.
We have old things and progressive ambitions. We're tight on money and we have concerns about cost of living. We're a teenager. That's just my decompression transition from a lot of bad news. So YOLO, we want to make sure that we are living within our means and keeping those progressive ambitions, but that we have a good vision about where we're going.
Better explain YOLO.
You only live once, folks. Be home before 11:00. Shifting into more productive slides away from my comedy hour. We, what we have here are wicked problems. These are very complicated problems. So I have just kind of put it in the, in the center, stepping back, going back to the aggregate. We're looking at approximately $7.5 million in baseline five-year capital gains, as I cited in my memo. So we have wicked problems. How can we make progress towards sustainability and equity objectives? And how can we move, improve the community center? We've been discussing quite a bit and while addressing other building deficiencies in an effective way. Now, how can we address the short-term facility needs against the long-term facility plan? And I believe that our solutions can consider the true costs of operating a modern government that we've kind of talked about today in terms of modern needs and efficiencies, while also considering the high cost of living that is a reality in the region and in the jurisdiction. That can't be ignored either. They, they can both mutually exist. And I believe that our solutions can be the model for accessibility, energy, and equity through zoning standards, meaning the city can set the standard by modeling the standard, of which we would have our commercial properties be expected to entertain. So when you're addressing wicked problems, the first thing is to know they're just that, they're problems. There are no wicked people, there are no right or wrong perspectives, there are multiple perspectives. But what we have in an environment with constrained resources are wicked problems, not wicked people. And in today's age, I just wanted to begin with that intention of acknowledging that. I believe we can pursue positive change and I think positive change needs to consider all the perspectives to gain mutual gains and find the gray area that we can because we can't, we can't do everything. The money is too great and the need is too great. But part of that means we, you know, we need to be solution-oriented and not problem-oriented. When you're solving wicked problems, you rely on solution thinking. On the short term, I want to just recognize a sense of urgency. We have been talking about the community center lately, and I mentioned this in the October 25th, but I just want to acknowledge the deficiencies right now. We, we aren't prepared to replace that warming center component and the cooling center component that the cooling center served that, they served that use over the past years. We are working on a contingency plan as we continue to navigate the structural repairs that James is overseeing for the Kulik. We don't have any space right now for our Parks and Recreation Office, so they continue to work remotely. We're working on alternative space, of course. And our senior board and general public meeting space continues to be unfounded. And our senior board and general public meeting space continues to be unfurnished while the Kulik Center remains in disrepair. But again, to correct, we are making the repairs right now. It's just not available for occupancy. James just really summarized well the costly end of life infrastructure for most of our buildings. The data is compelling and we have a lot of competitive budget priorities. And as I mentioned on the introduction, we have a certain level of revenues now that aren't guaranteed in 2025. So what, what does that look like in terms of balancing our, our strategies with the resources that we have, that we know to be true today? And of course, closing in on city councils, going back to our progressive ambitions. A city council made a, an intentional resolution to reduce our carbon by a significant percentage, I don't have off the top of my head, by 2030. And our buildings drive, in terms, from the government's perspective, our buildings are the greatest contributor to carbon that the government's responsible for. So here's, this is really just a discussion and I closed on this in my memo, but recommendations for finding the answers or solving the wicked problems. One is, you know, I'd ask council to discuss establishing a citizen led Merrill Task Force and with an ambitious goal of forming it by March 2022, so this spring, calling attention to the sense of urgency. I think that that group could become experts with the data, understand the budget data and the constraints and help us chart a project plan that can help, hopefully have us deliver a long term facilities plan that's based on data aligned to the city council's strategic objectives and your vision and considers the cost burdens. So a task force to help us find the gray area to move us forward. In the short term, we do have a mid-year budget adjustment coming up in January and then we are right into the fiscal 23 budget process this spring and March and April. So something council could consider is having two members of council serve on essentially a capital committee to provide input on what are our best focused priorities in terms of capital for facilities to focus on, knowing that we have a task force considering the long term plan. So how can we be most efficient and effective with our dollars? And then finally, adopting, the goal would be at the end there to adopt a long term facilities plan. Now, I'm not talking about documents or drawings. I'm talking about a doc, well, I am talking about a document that says, based on the data and the priorities and the budget, here's what makes sense to focus on in terms of repairs and replacements and here's when we think we can do that. Here's the boundaries, city staff, and go forth and pursue that. And this is really what that looks like in terms of next steps. We're also going to continue those good faith discussions with the school district and the community center. We had a very positive conversation this month. Hopefully we have identified that task force and near term priorities through the budget process. And as I said, by March, we possibly could have a project charter with the project timeline that might help provide some clear milestones for council and the public for progress forward. And thank you. Thank you, James. Excellent job seeing this project. If there are any questions for Bureau Veritas, I don't want to just, I think they're available. Because they are. So if you have any questions for them before we release them, I realize we didn't really announce them, but they are available on Zoom passively. So if there are any questions additionally for James or I for discussion on that recommendation, I see the floor to you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you for such a comprehensive overview of some really intense reading for council in a very short period of time. And, you know, I just wanted to say this is just the beginning of a very series of long and difficult and important conversations for the community. And wanted to open it up to council right now, just for any comments or questions about next steps, in particular with the citizen led task force. Curious what your thoughts are on that in terms of going forward. And I will add that I've had discussions with the city manager about helping us with the short term budget leading into the budget session. So we have, we have a lot of overlapping demands. So getting a long term project together, but also focusing and getting ready to talk about the next fiscal year budget and helping us, you know, have, you know, I've suggested a facilitator to help council do the prioritization of the short term, you know, decision making that we've done in the past, slightly different than from our strategic planning that we've done with the facilitator coming, but using that type of approach to help us navigate the short term funding decisions, not only for the fiscal year budget, but also for these, the immediate investments that this report details. So which ones should we be making in order to achieve energy savings now and make sure that we are putting the maintenance in so that we're not letting any facilities go into further decline? So that's kind of how I, I look at it over the next six months. I think are going to be some of our hardest conversations for this council to tackle with and in partnership and feedback from our residents about what we should be doing going forward.
If I may, through the chair, that kind of leads me to the task force. So can you kind of explain what that would look like, citizen led? What would that look like as far as, what would this task force look like? How do you, what do you envision it as?
For me, the purpose or the why of the task force are similar to what we've done, previous mayors have done in the past with task force. There was one for the headly override and the renewal. And that really helped residents to understand what the complexities were at the time of the Great Recession, the decline in property value and how to make cuts and where to make cuts. And having that direct input from residents was really critical for the council at the time to make some decisions about how to go forward and get support in those recommendations from, from the residents. And it's supposed to uncover new ideas and new innovations that typically you wouldn't hear through the normal diocese, you know, decision making process. So it opens up more possibilities, I think. And the last one was the task force for the Kulik Center, which I think was done with great intentions. But as Joe said at the beginning of the meeting, we had more wicked problems with all of our facilities. So we have great valuable information from that task force, but he saw that there needed to be a bigger picture conversation about all the facilities. So used in very specific, specific circumstances to solve and get feedback from, you know, residents who have sort of some of these skillsets to help navigate these issues. And that's what I recall the headly override or the, I don't even remember the name of the task force was under.
Before me.
Oh, that was, yeah, I served on that.
Yeah, what was it called?
It was the mayor's blue ribbon financial committee. We were just looking at, at what the financial was of the city and whether or not we could survive without the headly override. And basically, we couldn't. As a community, we could not survive without the headly override. It would have wiped out all of City Hall and half of the police department and fire department.
So through the chair, I guess, related to that, would this task force not only look at the facility's needs and prioritization and make recommendations on, you know, what to repair, what to replace and so forth? Would they also be looking at sources of funding? Be that, and I'm going to echo what Councilman Pollock has said earlier, these are hypotheticals. I'm not making suggestions. These are just questions. But would they look at, you know, revenue streams like selling city properties to raise revenues? Would they be looking at, you know, federal funds available from the Infrastructure Act? I don't, I don't know how that plays in, you know, in addition to looking at whether or not the headly override should be renewed? Will they be looking at those revenue questions as well as the facility's needs and prioritization? Is that too much?
Through the chair, is that a question for me or for the council?
I personally, I don't expect the task force to dive into revenue sources, but I anticipate those ideas coming up because it's going to be the natural part of the conversation of how do you pay for this? And I think what is palpable for the community is going to come out of the citizen task force members, who I think will be very thoughtful in, you know, determining how many seats, how many, and what type of skillset should be on there. Even though it's technically a mayoral appointee, you all know that I work with you and collect recommendations about who should sit on it. And then at the end of the day, I am looking for, leading up to figuring out the task force is how many hours are we asking for someone to donate their time to be on this task force? I think we need to be very clear about what our timing and hours of, you know, helping the city in this capacity, because some people might be interested and then they may hear that what the hours of commitment are over the period of time and may not have the time to do it. So that's the, that's the conversation of talking with people who might want to sit on the task force.
Through the chair, if I could share my experience of working on that financial committee task force, the blue ribbon commission. So that commission was about 12 weeks. We met, I believe it was Wednesday, anywhere from three to four hours a night every Wednesday for 12 weeks. Every meeting, we met with a different department head to talk about what their budget was because much like we talked about earlier, you know, every department managed their own budget as well as the facility. So I could see that, you know, we'd spend a lot of time with, with James talking about what, I would expect on this committee that we would talk about what the repair costs are for each building and what's that going to be deferred when, you know, you start, you know, building new, a lot of that maintenance cost goes down. So basically, you're just shifting money from maintenance to investment. So I would expect that it's probably going to be a very similar time consuming requirement.
I agree, but I also think the value of the output of that work.
Absolutely.
The residents help prove and show that the residents prioritize services that the community wants. And I think that was critical in making sure that the city budget was not decimated.
Yeah. Well, and we provided three, I believe it was three outputs. We provided what would it be if we did the full amount of the headly, which we ended up doing in the end, but we also said, what would the scenario be if we only did half? And what would be the scenario if we did nothing? And, you know, that may be a result too. You know, what if we only, if we did nothing, what are we looking at? And I think we kind of know what we're looking at if we did nothing. But, you know, I think we kind of have to do a overall, you know, what do we want to do over the next 20 to 25 years, you know, with our facilities?
For me, I think the task force is going to be, help deal with a lot of, I think, political conversation that typically comes with investing in government buildings. I feel like there's essentially that, you know, don't, don't repair government buildings because it's a waste of taxpayer dollars, whether or not you agree with that or not. But I have seen the, the challenges particularly running up to the Great Recession. If anybody recalls, and I was not on council, but 2008, 2009, there was a huge study done to redo City Hall. And I think it was the court.
It was $9 million that they wanted to invest in, in a new complex because it was the court, City Hall and the police station.
Yeah. So they knew in 2008 and nine that we needed new buildings. And it was a huge political council campaign issue for candidates in 2008 and 2009. And it died, I think, 3-2 at the diocese in 2008, 2009, under Mayor Covey. They had paid for the study, were ready to execute and move forward and that whole proposal died 3-2. So.
I think, sorry, Mayor, I think, I know what you're giving it. They spent almost a quarter of a million dollars on that study.
Yes.
I can't remember the name of the company.
Because it was too much money. And then, and then under Mayor Coulter, when the court was dying, as you noticed, none of the facilities included the court and I forgot to ask why. We own that building, but we invested in it too. But why wasn't the court included in the facility's conditions assessment? Sorry to jump back into that, but.
I think at the time, we just decided to focus on the buildings that were internally managed by the facility maintenance department. The courthouse is a city facility and it's had some recent renovations. I did include in the CIP numbers for doing a detailed condition assessment of that building. It didn't necessarily have to happen with this larger one. That can be done next year, which I believe is what I requested in the CIP.
Okay.
And again, just to go back into those without delving too much into it, those, all of those numbers are going to change and they should be adjusted. And we're going to have an internal database in our facilities department that constantly maintains these. So those numbers remain accurate. And then eventually, the, the goal is to have all of our buildings, the DOT included, as I mentioned, courthouse, those will be included as well.
And then, thank you for that.
Thank you.
May I finish one more thing?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So just the history of the challenges of investing in our buildings. And then the court, Judge Nalongo proposed using the ticket money that was collected over a decade that previous councils set up to do building maintenance and investment. And that included almost what, a half a million dollars to just remodel a little bit of the police department.
Yes.
About 470. And that happened in when? 2013?
Yeah, happened in 2013.
2013.
Yeah, 13.
So, so there has been this attempt, building by building, and to address the needs and find the revenue sources. And of course, the Great Recession and all of that sort of delayed or deferred conversations about future investments. So I feel like this is coming back and saying, this council is being asked to say, let's stop doing building by building, one by one, and come up with a strategic plan for the entire portfolio of assets that help run and make services run efficiently in the city of Burndale. So I think when I said, when I talk about the, you know, the ticket money and the fund that was set up like 15 years ago under council, I said that was a gift of looking ahead for the council that used the money to repair the court, right? Redo the court. And I see this act by this council setting up a long term investment strategy as the gift to a future council 10, 15 years from now, when they actually have to make decisions about major buildings. And so we're just part of this continuum of conversations, but I do not want to make light of how difficult these conversations are around municipal buildings and getting them up to modern standards and, and which is why I think the next six months are going to be some of the hardest that this council is going to tackle than any other council. So that's what I wanted to get, you know, sort of get off my chest and why the task force to me is important and its purpose, because they're going to give council insights and innovations and maybe ideas that we don't even think of. One of my strategic questions is, can we save money by consolidating buildings in the long run? You know, I don't know, but that's something I would like to at least look at. Maybe not the two, three years. Maybe not the two, three-year savings, but 20 to 30 years down the road. So anyway, that's opening it up to other comments and questions from council about the task force. Thoughts that you think we need to take into consideration?
If I may through the chair, I'm just going to share my overall comments. So I'm appreciative of everything that you've put together, staff, James and Joe, to present to us. I have been asking for this since the first time I came on council eight years ago, and I haven't shut up about it, so I'm glad that you have fulfilled my ask. Moving forward, I'd like us to look creatively at future use of our facilities. It's easy to just say, let's repair what we have, but that won't work to serve our community tomorrow. We need to look at what we want as well as what we need, and we should be open to unconventional ideas. For example, we could spend millions on an existing building for our community center that serves the needs we have today, or we could invest in a new building that serves the needs 30, 40, 50 years from now. And when I say being creative, we would, we could consider including the historical museum in the design of a, you know, new community center, which would increase the size and efficiency of that amenity and increase the visibility and accessibility to the public. That's just one of many opportunities that we have. We should look at this report as a positive and giving us plenty of options, instead of, oh my God, this is so much money we have to spend. So that's, that's how I'm going to look at it. It's an opportunity for us to improve our community tomorrow.
Thank you. Do you have any comments about the task force?
No, I agree with the comments that have been shared. I think it's important. I think we need to have a task force of the community, and we need, we need people to give us the input. It's, it would be easy for us in a vacuum to just sit in a room and say, this is what we need and this is what we want, but I'd much rather trust the voices of the people of our community and move forward. Because what I want may not be exactly what the community wants, and that my job is to provide what the community wants, not what I want.
And I also had questions about the city council capital committee too, and I was hoping, Joe, you could talk a little bit about what that looks like and how you see that working or integrated or connected to the task force in any way.
Well, you know, what I was getting at is, how do we balance the short-term priorities against the long-term plan? So if the task force is assembled by the spring at the same time as the budget process, I think it's just important for council to make sure that they're in sync with the task force in terms of what they view their priorities are. And of course, staff will be giving their input, and what we're looking at, now, we have a lot of fleet needs we've talked about, we have facilities needs, we have climate impact needs, we have a lot of capital priorities, not everything can happen over one year. So I think what I would be looking at is just feedback about balancing the short-term repair needs that we heard about today against some of our planned strategic needs that we had already talked about before the data. We're just, we're going to have to change, change course a little bit. And then how do we address the short-term need, again, getting back to the, just the recognition, we don't have a warming center, a cooling center, we don't have office space for parks and rec, we don't have a senior board space. So getting back to those kinds of questions, that's the short term, because I don't know that we can address, we can wait to address those through the process of a long-term plan development, right? Because that's, that could take some time.
If I may through the chair. First off, I'd say that I'm in support of the mayoral task force. I think it's important to have the community output, I mean, excuse me, input, and I think we've received over the years just valuable information from the community, and we're able to kind of utilize their ideas to formulate goals and projects and the way in which we wanted to move the city forward. So I'm in support of that. But what I would like to state is that we've been speaking on our facilities assessment for the last few hours, and I know that there's probably people from the Historical Society that are on the line possibly, and I don't, didn't, we didn't talk about it at all, where it's in the summary here, but it wasn't in the document here. So is there a reason for that, is why it wasn't in here?
James could speak for the technical. Strategically for us, we wanted to focus on our big-scale buildings. We also didn't speak of the park restrooms, and certainly other buildings have been studied. We're happy to speak on that, but we wanted to stay within the respect of the timeline given.
It says we may have questions regarding that at the end, that's all.
Absolutely.
Well, I see that, I see that building as part of the strategic long-term as well. And, you know, we've had conversations in the past about how to find, you know, more modern space for the historical museum, particularly with the development right next door at the time it was being constructed or being designed. And so, you know, things can be on the table, you know, to find what to do about, you know, our historical assets.
Through the chair, so I guess my question then would be, are we going to limit the task force on focusing only on the buildings that are within the study? Or are we going to have them look at all city-owned facilities?
I think it would be helpful to have them look at, I think, all of them, but-
I would agree.
But, you know, I don't know how much, you know, I don't know how they're going to have conversations about bathrooms, but, park bathrooms specifically, but I think those are important because I know that we've had comments from our residents, our bathrooms need a little bit of love as well in terms of investment. Oh, and how many people do you think should be on the task force, Joe? What do you recommend?
Task forces should be limited to five or seven in order to stay agile with meeting times. So we certainly have a talented community, and I'm confident there's five to seven people with experience around design or finance, whatever the criteria should be.
Okay, and while we don't have to discuss it all tonight, I am interested in listening and hearing from council members about how we're going to make that information public and how does the public can engage. So I would expect a full sort of description and write-up about the task force and its purpose, clarity, and then how do residents follow along and be engaged with that process on top of the task force members.
Through the chair, I think timing is an important question too. I haven't heard anyone discuss how long we anticipate having the task force to accomplish its goal and make its recommendations, whether that's in the weeks, months, a year. I think there are a lot of short-term needs that we can handle as needed, but at a certain point, you know, the point is to look out for a long period of time, so we've got to balance that thoroughness and efficiency.
My thought would be to work backward from the following year's budget process end or mid-year. So if you had a goal of delivering council with a report, let's say in December or January, that would probably be two months of reporting, and that takes you into, you know, March to October, active involvement, working on report assembling and then review, I think, for the final two months of the year. I would, I would first see through the committee and ask them what the tolerance is and pace, but that's, you know, without knowing who we're working with, that's just what I would throw out there.
Through the chair, for clarity, you're saying that the, that the task force would end in October?
I would say most of the, so in terms of frequent meetings?
Okay.
Yeah, and you'd be focused more on compiling report and recommendations, making sure that everything is ready for public submittal going into the new year. Because mind you, we lose a, one meeting in December for council, you lose holiday time in November, December in general, so I think the goal, a good goal would be to make sure you're wrapping up most of your research work and preparatory work in October.
A lot of the staff do all of the research and prep work.
Yes.
Right?
We compile everything.
Yeah, they compile everything.
Unless the task force wants to do all the writing, that's fine.
Yeah, that is not my expectation of the task force. They read, they just, they ask questions, and they give guidance and ideas. But it is a lot of materials to, and preparation to come ready for those conversations with staff. So that's how it's worked in the past, you know.
And through the chair, and some may want to do research on their own and bring that information to a meeting for further discussion. That has happened in past committees. My question or my request would be that we, we make clear what the objective is, what tasks we expect them to complete, and what is their final output to council? What are we expecting them to deliver to us? I think that's important. One of the things that wasn't clear to us in that financial that Blue Ribbon was, what did council want from us? It was, throughout the whole meeting, we were just gathering all this information and, you know, deciding on, you know, could we, couldn't we, but we didn't really know what council wanted from us till near the end, when we kind of threw a presentation together and presented it to council.
If I also may add, I would, if, you know, just to kind of think about, I would like to see people in that task force that have a specific knowledge geared towards facilities and, you know, we have people that specifically know about, you know, age back and things like that, just, you know, kind of just to really spread the knowledge around, because I think that's important, so just something to think about.
Some skill sets that I've been thinking about as an architect, someone who knows construction, someone on finance, you know, to give all of those points, points of view and facilities, you know, that's important too. And I would like someone-
Accessibility.
Yes, accessibility is a big one here. And as Alan Hill says, inclusive over compliance. That sometimes ADA compliance is not enough.
Through the chair, what, would the city manager's office own this project, or who on the staff would lead it?
The city manager's office would own it with technical support from the DPW and our economic development director.
So we, you know, Joe and I are presenting a framework for a task force. It's clear we don't have, you know, we're looking for ideas how to shape it, which is, nothing's been determined, which is why we're having this conversation. But the purpose and why, I think, is clear to me, why we need citizens to be a part of this. And it goes back to wicked problem solving. We don't want to do this in a vacuum, just on council and staff. We want to broaden and expand about how we go about these really complex, complex issues. And we don't need a decision tonight at all, and we can ruminate and come up with more ideas and structure this and have it come to council for presentation on what the final structure of the task force is. And I know Joe would like to have the task force in place by March, so we have a, you know, January to sort of formalize this and February to, to really crystallize how this will function and what is the deliverable. I think that's a great comment. What is the final deliverable? What is council's expectations of what you're looking for? And that would probably be in the scope of work for the task force, so they're very clear about what we're asking them. And I want to be very clear about when we extend the invitation, what they're signing up for. So I would never extend an invitation with a loosey-goosey. Yeah, and this task force will tell you about it once you get there. That's inappropriate and a waste of their time if we're not clear on the shape of the task force.
Through the chair, the next step traditionally for something like this would be, or in this case, me, to compile a resolution that defines what the task force is, what they'll be working on, and you just kind of shape out the scope, and then council would adopt a resolution, formalizing the structure of the task force. I would say there's a recruitment here, so probably the earlier the better. So we have, I could certainly spend this month kind of collaborating with council on how the resolution is shaped in terms of what the task force priority is, and then we could come prepared out of the new year January to adopt a resolution if that's a timeline that's acceptable to council.
I'm looking, Chair, just one final thought, and I'm sorry, it takes me a little while to cook up a thought here. If, if the task force would effectively be using all of next year to come up with recommendations, so we're essentially losing a year of productivity, we're using that year for, for thoughtful dialogue about the buildings. If that's the case, couldn't we bake in a finance task force into that, since we're talking about our facilities, and I know it'll include some of the finance, but we are facing the headley override issue? Wouldn't it make sense to just lump them together?
I'm going to get feedback from the original member of that task force.
I would say no, and for, probably one of the biggest reasons is, I think 2022 is too soon before, is, is too early for when the headley ride is going to come up, because we don't have really solid numbers three years out, you know? It starts to be a guesstimation of what we're really looking at. When we did it in 2010, it was for a headley in 2011. So my suggestion is to wait at least till, you know, 2023 or 2024 to have that financial team, and that's going to be a completely different group of people. Those were people who were more budget and finance background, and I, I can honestly, well, I don't know. I think I was selected or asked to be on it because I had run for council, I had made a huge big deal about the budget, you know, I was very vocal about the budget back then. And I think I was asked to be on it for that reason, either to shut me up or, you know, I need to speak up. And so that's why I think I was selected, but most of the people on there had a lot of financial background. I think it's a different subset of people. But I also think that it's just too soon before the headley needs to be in place. It may be better numbers come 2023, it could be worse numbers than what we're going to expect next year. Am I right, or, you know, am I completely off on that, or?
I, I think once the committee sees that the last of head revenue from, you know, it ending in 2026, they're going to question, well, how else do we pay for these things? I think it's naturally going to come up. I think combining another conversation about headley is a different path, even though there's conversation overlap, and getting your brain around headley Prop A literally is a whole different study session. You could spend two months just learning those two things and redirecting you from the conversation, taking you to look at the facilities. So I'm non-committal, because I also want the task force to, in some ways, meet the, meet the deliverables, but also have the flexibility to determine what the innovations and outcomes could- what the innovations and outcomes could be. So I don't want to constrain, does that make sense?
I know.
Okay. So.
If I can continue to share, I guess I would be concerned that that group would be struggling, they'd be playing tug-of-war with themselves over, well, can we afford it? But we need it. But can we afford it? But we need it.
Versus, here's the idea, this is what we want to do.
This is what we believe our community needs for the next 30 to 40 years. And then in a year or two, you have a financial committee that says, well, this is what this committee said we need, and this is what we're going to have to invest. Do we ask for a headley override in order to continue with this? Or do we say, this community's not worth the investment in these buildings, so we're going to push against the headley?
That to me, it gives me so much anxiety because we're talking about the push and pull of, you know, I want to make these investments, but do I want to spend it? And I like where your head's at with that because I know that that will be a challenge for these people. They're going to look at all this, and they're going to want everything. And where do you find the funding for it? My fear and my anxiety is that we then have a finance committee that follows this, sees the recommendations, but says, we can't do that. We don't have the funds. So we spent all this time and energy and all this thoughtfulness coming up with our creative solutions, and then we can't do it, and everybody's disappointed. So that's my fear, that's my reservation.
But if I may, but you may, at the same time, have this same group go, well, these are our recommendations for what we think we need, but this is what we think the financial situation is. So even though we need this, we're saying that you shouldn't have it. You can come up with the same result with the same group of people. And my concern is that if you do it that early, you're not working with solid numbers because it's three years out.
You both bring up really important and salient points. And I think that we need the direct staff to go back and talk about this and navigate, how do we incorporate some of this conversation with the task force? Because you're right, and that's where I'm like, I don't want to constrain their conversation, but I also don't want to take a left turn and do headley. Does that make sense? I don't want them to get so much scope creep that they move away. And I hear your point, which is we want them to be as creative as possible, think of what's right. And then where do we meet in the middle? I think that's where council role is going to be ultimately, but taking guidance and advice from both. So what I would recommend is that, I've heard great feedback on this idea of a task force. We had some general parameters of it tonight. All of your feedback helps shape it more and I think can help put staff and Joe put a resolution in place and then come up with a very clear scope of work and describe the end of deliverable that we're looking for. And then say, hey, these are some headwinds that this group is going to encounter, or we're going to expect that, but we want to make sure that they don't become the determining factor of what to do with the headley. Though they might provide a recommendation, depending on what they find. And that's where I want them to have the flexibility. Does that make sense? Because we're asking them to put up their lot of time and effort in. And I don't want to, I don't want to seed any of mayoral ideas or council ideas that would make them, that would influence their conversation in any way. Does that make sense? I'm trying to have them have some boundaries, but also be self-determining in some way. Okay?
If I can, through the chair, I kind of look at this as being, as them creating a CIP on steroids, you know, of our facilities, you know, creating a list of all of these things that, you know, we need to succeed as a community. And then council really deciding on, you know, what can we afford? And, you know, you bring together, you need, you know, three quarters of a million dollars for a fire truck. Well, you know, do we have three million, you know, three quarters of a million dollars for a fire truck? Can we spend that money? I kind of look at this as the same way, you know, of a group of people saying, these are what we need to have, and council, or at that point, a financial committee saying, you can't afford it.
And then I think what we need to do is say to staff and the CED, DPW is, you know, here are these interesting ideas coming out of this group. What can you go explore in these ideas? Can they be somewhat formulated a little bit where we could say, this is possible or this is not possible? Is that, is that the boundaries of letting loose staff to go and figure out if any of these ideas that they are heard from the task force actually have legs? We've never really stepped back and said, what's possible? Other than the city hall and court back in 2008, 2009. And I honestly don't know what is modern for cities of our size anymore. I think there's some research needs to be done. I know Royal Oak got a new city hall, but they're 65% bigger than us, and their budget is, I mean, it's not a comparable-sized city in order to say that's, you know, conducive to us. But East Point got a new city hall. I have no idea what they spent on that. And so it would just be interesting to see what cities around here. I see townships all the time putting in new facilities in their green builds, always, you know, salivating over their new buildings.
Through the chair, I know that we would have a staff liaison. Are you looking to have a council liaison as well? That's a question. And two, would you want, who would you want leading that group of people? When we did the Blue Ribbon Finance Committee, we had a resident actually lead the discussions, and staff was there to assist.
I think that's a possibility. I think headley is different than, because that's a statewide, right, versus owning all the research information about our buildings. So I would take a recommendation from staff on that one. And if a city council person wants to be on the task force, you've got to be available and regular to be able to go.
I'd like to be considered.
And be, well, you like task force.
I do.
So, and if anybody else is interested, too, everything's on the table for discussion tonight other than we really like to get this done.
Through the chair, I would just like to make sort of a, hopefully, a final comment.
And I do need to open up a public comment.
Yeah, that was actually going to be my last point. Basically, just, you know, this was a lot of information to absorb over a short period of time. You know, in addition to tonight's presentation, we had a lot of detailed information, you know, not all of which we were able to dive into deeply, which is part of why I think it does make a lot of sense to have a task force that spends a fair amount of time diving into this topic. I will say that there, you know, if we're all honest, it probably causes us a lot of anxiety to see, you know, to confirm that we're reaching the end of life on a lot of our buildings within a few years of, in anticipation of potentially losing a significant amount of tax revenue. These are just facts that are beyond our control. But we now, as Councilman Pollock has said, have the opportunity to, you know, make some strategic decisions and make some long-term plans. My gut reaction to forming a task force was, you know, oh my God, we have so many great volunteers who are already overtaxed. You know, one more task force makes me want to lose my mind. But I think it's actually, I think it's something that we need to do here. Because, you know, we need resident engagement, we need public engagement. And to do that in a, on a massive scale means sort of reeducating constantly, you know, a wide swath of people. And we need to do that as well, but there needs to be a smaller group of people who are super focused on these issues and, you know, more steeped in the concerns. One resource I wanted to bring up is that we did have the Cobalt Community Survey within recent history, and so I hope that that will be used as a resource by this task force to, as a piece of community data and input. And so although this is sort of a big lift and a worry someone and, you know, one that I think is going to have, you know, cause us some sleepless nights in the next few years, I think it can lead to a lot of good and a lot of potential. And I hope that we get to focus on those aspects soon. So, but it does need to have, you know, a fair amount of community input, both that we've collected already in a strategic way as well as moving forward.
Any other final comments before I open up the public comment? If folks are joining us today online?
One comment is just through the chair reminding, the timeline, I think, would be driven by the task force. When we talk about project teams, they should be assigning roles, responsibilities, and having input on task timelines. But from a timing perspective, you have a significant amount of engagement and information that's coming due in the spring and summer with the five-year Master of Landes Plan update, Parks Plan update, and Climate Action Plan. So all three of those will be critical resources for the committee line. There's a lot of research and data in there as well that will be helpful.
Okay, seeing no more comment from council. And this was a great discussion, by the way. This is what happens in a study session, folks. There's a lot more debate, and we're not doing typical process for a regular council meeting. All right, I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager, Kyle, to see if anybody's joined us on Zoom. There's no one in the council chambers tonight, folks, so other than staff.
Mayor, the hand raising is live. We have one call in, it's 248, last three, 209. If you'd like to comment, go ahead.
Hello, person 209? Phone number? Would you like to make a comment to council about our discussion tonight?
Kyle, do you have them unmuted? Because it looks like they're muted.
They have the option to unmute.
Unmute themselves, okay.
All right, well, seeing that no one has.
They unmuted themselves.
Hi, 209?
No, that was just me. Councilman.
You're just being fancy on Zoom.
Maintain your role.
Sorry, I overstepped my boundary.
How funny.
Few residents who have stuck it out, but I seen no raising.
Yeah, well, I appreciate them following along and listening, even though they might not have a comment tonight. But this is being recorded, and I do expect residents to have lots of questions and feedback going forward. I know that every council person here is eager to hear what you have to say, your thoughts and ideas, honestly. I said, what are our possibilities going forward? And I'm really taking a step back and saying, let's look, let's look. Let's reimagine what's possible and then figure out, can we afford the re-imagination of what's possible?
Through the chair, if residents, let's say, you know, over the weekend or in the next week or so, look at the video on YouTube or whatever, and they have questions, where should those questions be directed to? Because I'd hate for them to be just captured in social media posts somewhere and none of us be able to access that information. So where would you like people to direct their questions?
I think that all of us get our information and interact differently with residents, but just for sharing with the rest of council, I think it would be great if residents could email us so that we are starting to collect them and have a repository, and/or you can email the city manager as well. But having a record of it officially via email, for me, is the best way and that we can start cataloging them and making sure that the rest of council has access to them as well. Yeah, if they're stuck on social media, then they're not foible, they're not official record, and that is not the typical way that we work in collecting responses. And then maybe in the future, the task force might have a survey. Who knows what they'll propose in terms of getting engagement as well.
Through the chair, there is a news story about tonight's meeting on the city website homepage. I can ask our communications director to add the contact information for city council. And the simplest way to contact me is by creating executive@ferndalemi.gov. And they'll go, they'll hit my inbox. So we'll add that to the story, and then it can be shared out by everybody.
Excellent. Well, just wanted to say thanks again to the city manager team and DPW and the fire chief for being here, and James. You're a great asset to the team, and I know you know our buildings like the back of your hand now, particularly if you're babysitting the boiler at the community center. So thank you for all your hard work and your dedication. With that, everybody, I am adjourning this meeting at 8:25.
Recording stopped.